Okay, so, welcome to Book Club on the Great Path of Awakening. This evening, we're going to cover point six of point seven. Can you believe it? We're almost done. Although, if you've really, if you've kind of taken the inner message of this book to heart, you know you're never going to be done with this book, or this book is never going to be done with you, which makes it like the coolest book and the most subversive book club ever. So I want to, I want to say thank you for being part of one of the most subversive book clubs of the summer. Because there are a few people who have written me notes and so forth to tell me that reading this book is slowly changing their minds and their lives, and that's like super cool. To me, that's the best kind of book. It's subversive, that it kind of like gets underneath the level of ego fixation and it starts to work on you. So I really appreciate you coming along on this trip. So I'm going to start with just one brief prayer, and because we're going to do a little bit more praying in a few minutes. So I'm going to just start with a couple of short prayers. Excellent at the beginning means that we approach all of our practice of spiritual life with the intention that it be a benefit to ourselves and others. So we start with that intention. Okay, thank you. So, good evening. We are, this is week number five of the, of the book club. Next week will be the final week of book club, but several people have asked me, could we like keep going? And the answer is maybe we'll go for one more, just where we can just sit and chat for an hour or so. Instead of like studying the book, we can just do Q and A or just talk about life. So I'm considering doing that for at least one week and possibly two, just depends on when people are available. If people are available for the first recap class, but not the second one, then you know. Anyhow, if they're not available for the first one, I'll have a second one and so on. So, so this evening, we're going to be covering point six, as I mentioned. But for the first 20 minutes or so, I'm going to look at the Q and A in chat and see if there's any questions in chat. The first question is a question regarding the practice of Tonglen. And those of you who have practiced it, remember that it's a practice in which you sit quietly in meditation and then imagine with the out breath that you're sending goodness to all sentient beings. And with the in breath, you're removing the suffering from beings and that once that suffering touches you, it meets with your Bodhisattva motivation and the suffering dissolves into nothing and disappears. And then we breathe out goodness again. So the questioner is asking, "I have been visualizing taking in on the, on the in breath and giving out on the out breath, but I don't feel the compassion I am trying to give out. Do you have any suggestions?" I can really understand this. I can definitely understand this question because these types of meditations are not something we're used to. We didn't grow up learning this kind of meditation. So it's really understandable that it might be a little challenging. For me, as I've gotten a little older, I kind of forget where I am in the practice. Am I sending or am I receiving? And so I get a little confused. But beyond that, one thing you could try, and I'd say try this and then come back and let us know if it worked or not. But I'm thinking that if you use the feeling tone rather than a color or something, or a word or something else. So maybe if while you're breathing out, you think, "I give all of my goodness, like all of my goodness. I give all of my goodness to everyone. May they all have the goodness that I have." And then as you breathe in, you would think, "I remove from all beings their pain and suffering and their negativity." And, and with that, what you can also do, and this is in Khenpo Rinpoche's book, Dharma Paths, as well as in The Great Path of Awakening. It says that as you breathe out and give that goodness, that you should actually see beings receiving it and being made joyful. And that as you remove, as you breathe in and remove their suffering, you should think that the beings that you're visualizing, that they're made happy. And so it very well could be that what we are training in is actually this giving, this giving heart, wanting to and being willing to give all of our goodness away. That is really what love is. It's not, it's not a, a feeling. Love is not the romantic feeling of two people or the familial love of parents and children and siblings. The Buddhist concept of love is this, is this loving kindness, this offering of goodness and kindness. So it's not that you're going to be feeling love when you send that out, but you're actually practicing love by sending out that goodness. And you may not be feeling compassion when you remove their suffering, but if you see them as being benefited by what you've done, you're practicing compassion. So it's not necessarily that you're going to be feeling love on the out breath or feeling compassion, but that over time, not like in the session that you're practicing, but over time, you're going to, it's going to feel more natural to want to give to others and it's going to feel more natural to want to remove their suffering. I still may be misunderstanding the question. So questioner, if you've got a follow-up, go ahead and type it in while I'm answering the next question. Because sometimes I don't clearly understand your, your meaning and I want to make sure I get your question answered. So that's, I'd say just by adding this feeling of giving your goodness, try that. Let's see, let's see how that works. Now, let's see. Ask my question so that I may be useful to others. Oh yeah, in Soothing the Pain of Faith, which is a lineage supplication to the Lojong lineage masters. If you remember, this, this practice of Lojong is actually a lineage practice. It has its own lineage that goes back to the Buddha. And the, the prayer Soothing the Pain of Faith, which is in this edition on page 99, and starts with the words on page 100. The, the prayer starts with the guru above one's head and then one prays to the Buddha Shakyamuni and his regent Maya Trea and so on. And then at the end, at the end of every stanza, it requests what we are, the prayer, the prayer is requesting, "Bless me with the full development of love, compassion, and bodhicitta, and the ability to dismiss and dispel." I've seen several translations of this line and I really like dismiss and dispel the best. And if you look at the, if you look at the note at the bottom of page 100, there is a tiny footnote that says dismiss and dispel. In his writings, Jang and Kontrol explains dismiss as the dismissal of our ego clinging. We're dismissing our ego cling, saying, "Not today, ego cling. May I be able to let go of my ego fixation and my ego cling. May I be able to dismiss it." And then a dispel is the dispelling of disturbing emotions, the dispelling of our disturbing emotions. So when we're asking for the ability to dismiss and dispel, we're not exactly making a magic incantation. But we are making an aspiration that we will have the inner strength and well, and understanding in order to dismiss our ego fixation, especially when it's rearing its ugly head and to dispel our negative mental affliction. So that's what, that's the meaning of that one. Let's see, um, let's see, oh yeah, that, I, am I adding two classes? I would like to add two, but I'm not sure everybody could attend them. So I'm going to do some kind of survey and see if we can do two additional classes that are just discussion and, and practice and nothing else. So I won't be covering additional things in the book unless you want us to cover things that, that weren't covered fully and completely in the next two classes. Because the next two classes, I have to kind of hop, skip and jump through the text. And so, so I know the Columbus KTC newsletter did say that on September 2nd and 9th, there will be classes. They will not be formal classes. They'll just be gatherings of people who want to come. I have to make new Zoom links for that, but everybody will get them. I have, I have your email addresses, so I'll send you those as I know more about them. Let's see. Someone is just joining the class for the first time. Thank you for coming. We have, it says here, "I've missed the previous four. Is it possible for me to view?" Yes. Let's see, if you signed up through Eventbrite, which I think you did, there's, in one of your emails, there may be a red button that says access your event. And I will try to send in the email a link that I send out the next couple of days. I'll try to send out a link so that you can go to all of the previous videos. They are all on my, my YouTube page, Lama Kathy YouTube page. And if I get a chance during, tonight, I'll type in the YouTube link to all of the, there's like a folder in my YouTube. All four classes are there, but I'll also have them on the online event page. They'll be in two places, YouTube and on the Eventbrite online event page. So yeah, you can catch up with all of them, plus the extras that I made early. Let's see, see, understand the answer. Oh, good. You understand the answer? Okay, good. Yeah, I think that, yeah, thank you. I'm, thank you. I appreciate the fact that I'm just never sure that I really communicate answers. So thanks for that. Okay, so now we have another additional five to seven minutes. So if anybody has another, oh, here's another question. Question, another question regarding the lineage supplication, Soothing the Pain of Faith. Where might I find a bit of background on the persons I'm praying to? Oh boy. I don't know. I think the easiest place to find background. Ooh, I would, I would first start out by reading the, the history, the history section in, in this book. Because some of them are actually mentioned in this book. So in the translator's introduction, some of these are meant, some of these beings are mentioned. But the other, the only other place I could tell you, because online it's so hit and miss. Because sometimes when you look stuff up on the internet, you get erroneous information. But there is, there is a Buddhist site that has pretty good definitions. And that is, it's Rigpa Wiki, R-I-G-P-A-W-I-K-I, Rigpa Wiki. And I think you'll be able to find some of the people that are mentioned in here and there. There's no one book written by somebody that says, "Here are all the names," you know. And so we have to, so we got, it's a little, going to be a little hit and miss. We'll have to look them up. So whatever is not in this book, you know, I think we'll have to go online and look each one of them up individually. It's great to know the masters of the lineage though, and there have been many books written about Lojong. So I'll have to do some digging. If anybody finds a history book on Lojong, let me know. Let's see, when doing, oh, thank you. There's, thank you. Somebody put in chat the YouTube playlist. Thank you. So Mary Ann, you can, you can look at the, in the chat and the YouTube link is in there for all the previous classes. Thank you, dear. Appreciate that. Let's see, then, question regarding, let's see, okay, right. "When doing this practice, is there a danger of taking on the suffering yourself and being burdened by it rather than being able to relieve it?" Yeah, I can definitely understand this question. I really do. Because I think that so many of us are sensitive people and part of the reason we come to spiritual life is because we've grown up as, as sensitive, intuitive and feeling loving, kind people. And as such, we often pick up the atmosphere of people who are around us. And sometimes we pick that up to our detriment. So I can, I can definitely understand the, the, the thinking behind this question. And I have, I have a little bit of good news. And this comes straight from my teacher, Khenpo Karthar Rinpoche, who, who said that he has never met a single person who has been harmed by doing Tonglen. And he's met quite a few. And he said that the problem, he said that we have with the practice of Tonglen is that we perceive that, that all of that suffering is, is made of matter. You know, atoms and molecules and that by taking in all of those atoms and molecules that were causing harm to our body, which is also made of atoms and molecules. But what he, what he went to some lengths to explain to us is that the practice of Tonglen is actually not using atoms and molecules. It's actually using the imagination. And so, very much like people use their imagination to walk through a situation before they encounter it. Some people who work with their fears often visualize a scary situation and visualize them working their way through that situation beforehand. Some people imagine that they're, that the medicines they take are, have great effect and blessing and, and are actually helping their illness. And so visualization can be used to help us bring about a state of mind that's helpful or useful. So what we're doing is just like the athlete visualizes hitting a baseball properly or sinking a basket properly, we're visualizing what it's like to be Bodhisattvas, to be truly loving and kind. And so there is, because our mind is not made of matter, our mind is not made of atoms or molecules. It, it is, the Buddha explained the mind as being limitless, meaning it has no color, no shape, no location, no beginning and no end. And as such, it has a limitless ability to give and a limitless ability to accept. And so since the mind is not made of material, there is no harm that can come to the mind from doing the, the practice of Tonglen. However, what Rinpoche did say is that he has met people who have a heightened, I think he said a heightened sense of self. They have a very strong and heightened sense of me, I, and self. And he said that they might actually experience not harm, but fear of harm. And he said that if they think they're being harmed, he said, "The fear will actually make them feel unwell." And so, he said, "In that particular case, it might be wise to only do the sending until you get used to it." And so that might be one way to handle the concern. I think that because we're only, I don't have, yeah. Because, you know, if we're using our prayer beads to count our Tonglen and we're only doing the Tonglen for maybe, I don't know, 10 beads of in and out breath or 21 beads of in and out breath, it's only two or three minutes. And so if we're only doing two or three minutes of Tonglen, this might actually help us to feel fresher about it, like it's fresh. It's, it's not stale. So, so that's, I think is a, the burden only comes from, from fear. And so if you feel that you're actually taking on something and it's burdening you, then, then it's because of that heightened sense of self that Khenpo Rinpoche described. He says, "Some people have it. It's just a thing. They have this heightened sense of it." But, so for that, I would just do the, the sending only for the time being and really, really like put your heart into it. And it's like, just imagine that all these beings are receiving all of your goodness and they're being made happy and, and that sort of thing. And then slowly, maybe slowly over time. An alternative is given in, in Khenpo Karthar Rinpoche's book, Dharma Paths, where he, when he explains Tonglen, he says you breathe in the negativity of others and then imagine that that negativity and suffering dissolves into nothing and disappears completely. Now, if that helps you, you could try that. When you breathe in the negativity, it dissolves into nothing and disappears. If you could see that happening, that also might be an extra step toward, toward being able to work with that. So there's time for one more question. If there's somebody out there who has a question, you can, I'm looking at the pictures of you. Anybody else? You can unmute and ask. Okay, okay, all right. So there's no other questions. So we'll, we'll go ahead and begin the, the regular portion of the class. I'm going to try something. I'm not really good at sharing screens and I'm hoping that I don't share something like silly. But I'm going to give this a try. Okay, let's see if I can do it without making a mess. And then I'm going to try to put the, the prayers. Yeah, here it is. Okay, let's see if that'll work. So you can all see them. Okay, let's see. Bring your shared window to the front. I don't know how to do that. Nice try though. Okay, well, all right. So we're not going to be able to do that. All right. So I'm going to start by, by reading the prayer at the beginning of the Lojong practice. And I'm going to lead you through a short practice of Tonglen. On the, let's see, one, two, three, fourth page, there's the Refuge Prayer in, in English. And I'll recede it, recite it one time. "Until I reach enlightenment, I take refuge in all the Buddhas and in the Dharma and the Sangha. By the merit of accomplishing the six perfections, may I achieve Buddhahood for the benefit of all sentient beings. At the beginning of every period of meditation, imagine your root guru sitting on a lotus and moon seat above your head. The guru's body is radiant and face happy and smiling as they regard all beings with non-referential compassion. In the guru, all root and lineage gurus are present. With intense respect and devotion, repeat the lineage prayer." But we're going to skip over the lineage prayer because it's long and we're going to go to the short prayer, the short Guru Yoga prayer. And I'm going to repeat it three times. Think that we're addressing the guru who is above, seated above our head. "I pray for your blessing, my guru, great and completely worthy spiritual friend. I pray that you will cause love, compassion, and bodhicitta to arise in my mind. I pray for your blessing, my guru, great and completely worthy spiritual friend. I pray that you will cause love, compassion, and bodhicitta to arise in my mind. I pray for your blessing, my guru, great and completely worthy spiritual friend. I pray that you will cause love, compassion, and bodhicitta to arise in my mind. Then imagine that your guru descends through the aperture of Brahma at the top of your head and comes to sit in your heart in a pavilion of light, which is like an open shell. This exercise in intense respect and devotion is known as Guru Yoga. It is important to begin every period of meditation in this way." And now, I will sit quietly and, and just breathe in and out for a moment, leaving aside all the troubles of the day and getting ready for our class. Okay, thank you. So today, we're going to be covering the sixth of the seven points of mind training. And if you recall, the seven points of mind training are enumerated on page seven of our book. The, the first of the seven points is the groundwork, instructions on what supports Dharma. Number two is the actual practice, training in bodhicitta. Number three is the transformation of adversity into the path of awakening. Number four is the utilization of the practice in one's whole life. Number five is the extent of proficiency in mind training. Number six are the commitments of mind training. And number seven are the guidelines for mind training. So each of these builds upon the other. And we've already studied the groundwork and the main practice of bodhicitta. Bodhi means awakening and chitta means mind. So to develop the mind of awakening, we practice Lojong or mind training. Lo means mind and Jong means training. So by training our mind in the two kinds of bodhicitta, which are relative bodhicitta, which is love and compassion, and ultimate bodhicitta, which is the development of wisdom and an understanding of emptiness. So in this way, by practicing these two types of bodhicitta, we can reduce our self-fixation, which is the cause of so much of our suffering, and open the possibility of our being able to care for ourselves and to care for and take care of other people in a healthy way. So, and so the practice of Tonglen, sending goodness to others and imagine on the out breath and imagining that we receive and remove their suffering on the in breath. This basic practice of exchanging ourselves for others is the way that we slowly reduce the size of our ego fixation. It starts out pretty big and then slowly, gradually, through the practice of Tonglen, we reduce the size of it and we reduce its impact on our minds and our lives. And so the, so now we've come to the place where we do practice of Tonglen every day while we're sitting on our seat. But we also do the practice of Tonglen through the 59 mind training slogans, which we practice when we're not on our meditation seat, when we're actually outside wandering around in this world of suffering that the Buddha called samsara. As we're wandering through samsara, we have a guidebook, which are the 59 mind training slogans, which show us how to practice love and compassion and an understanding of wisdom in our everyday life. By the way, I want to, I want to, I know you gave me a message, but I want to send a shout out to Chuck. Thank you for being here. You really, you know, you really could have gotten an excuse from class today, but thanks for being with us. I appreciate it. I'm glad you're here.
Wouldn't have missed you for anything.
Namaste, man. I'm really glad you're doing well. We'll keep you in our prayers. Okay, all right.
I'm listening. Thank you very much.
No, I'm, I'm glad. Well, we'll have you, we'll have you out of there in no time. It's all right, Chuck. Take, take it easy. Take it easy. Okay, so, so now we're talking about, now we're talking about point six. And point six are the commitments of mind training. So you might ask, well, what are these 16 slogans about? And I think they're, what they're really about is answering the question, how do we as flawed human beings, how do we really make changes in ourselves? How do we really change ourselves? And there are two factors, I think, that come, that help us in changing ourselves. One is being able to watch our minds and know what we're thinking and know what we're feeling and know what our motivations are. So I think that being able to watch our mind is really important. That's a good way and important factor in making change. And the second way that we make change in our lives is that once we notice our thought patterns and our motivations and we don't like them, we change them. And that is the using of our remedies. We use all of these slogans that we have learned. We learn how to put others first. We learn how to take care of ourselves. We, so by watching our minds, we know, we have the opportunity to know what's going on in our minds and in our hearts. Moment to moment to moment to moment. And you might think at first that that's a little bit oppressive, like, you mean, if I like know all of my motivations, I like have to take responsibility for them? And the answer to that is yes, because everything we do, think and say actually forms and conditions our mind and it conditions how we experience the world. Our mind is that with which we, is what we experience this world with. The body conveys information, but the mind is what experiences it. So if we think, say, and do something habitually, we will experience a world that's made of that. So if we're resentful, we'll experience a world of resentment. If we're joyful, we'll experience a world of joy. If we're caring, we'll experience a world of caring and if, and so forth and so on. So in the end, we can condition our mind at any moment because our mind is always potentially possible to come under our control. The practice of shamatha, quiet sitting meditation, calm abiding, that's the meaning of the word shamatha is calm abiding. That just being able to rest the mind and watch the breath coming and going. That teaches us how to watch our thoughts. And it also teaches us and gives us the potential to restrain ourselves from doing impulsive negative things to ourselves and impulsive negative reactive things to other people. And so that's how being aware of our mind is so useful because it can help us to abstain from and withdraw from doing negative things. And on the other hand, when we practice love and compassion on our meditation seat through doing the practice of Tonglen, we begin to become conditioned by that so that we want to be of help to others. We want to benefit others. And it gives us a new way of working with our negative mental afflictions. It gives us a new way to respond. But it's important to keep up with this. In other words, we have to, we have to continuously know what we're thinking and be able to think differently or be willing to think differently. We have to always be wanting to use our remedies. As my friends in 12-step like to say, when you are sick and tired of being sick and tired, you will take hold of the remedies that will work for you and will help you change your mind. So we have to keep up with this or we fall back into impulsive bad habits of reactiveness. So point six provides us with a set of behavioral precepts. They actually, some translations, instead of calling them the commitments of mind training, calls them the precepts of mind training. Promises that we, we should keep to ourselves so that we can continue to practice love and compassion and not do any backsliding. And, and so in other words, these, these 16 slogans show us how a Lojong practitioner should behave. I know that many of you come from Christian backgrounds. And so when you were growing up, if you grew up Christian, the preachers would often say that at the time of the first Christian church, that either Jesus or one of his disciples said that when you are with a group of people, by their behavior, by the fruit of their behavior, you will know them. In other words, they will be kind, they will be loving, they will be peaceful and so on. And so what we have to remember is that we're Lojong practitioners. You know, we're, we're of the Lojong lineage, we're of Atisha's lineage and we're of Chakawashidori's lineage and so on. So we are, we are of, of their, of this lineage. And so we have a lineage to celebrate and a lineage to fulfill the aspirations of. When we pray to those lineage masters in soothing the pain of faith, that long prayer, we're asking for their blessing. We're asking them to be present with us and for us to become part of their lineage. So we could also identify ourselves as Bodhisattvas in training. I know many people have the T-shirt. I thank you very much for getting the Bodhisattva in training T-shirt, but we are Bodhisattvas in training and Lojong is our method. So hopefully, the people who see Lojong practitioners will know us by our wisdom, our demeanor and the inner strength we get from challenging our own negative mental afflictions. If people wonder why sometimes the word Bodhisattva is, is is translated as awakening warrior, it's because you have to have a courageous attitude to confront your own mental afflictions and you have to have a courageous attitude to say no to your own negative actions and your own selfishness. So it takes a lot of courage. The, the 16 slogans are, are these promises that we make to ourselves. And so I'm, I'm going to hit some of the highlights in these 16 slogans. I will actually read them all, but I will not be able to explain them all. So if I miss one of your favorites, put it in chat and I'll make sure I get to it at the end if I have a little question time. They, all of these 16 slogans share a theme, a theme. Basically, they're saying, look, you're a Lojong practitioner. Don't act like ordinary confused people who don't believe in karma or the transformative power of love. I mean, right? You know, so that I, I am, I am, I am not exactly a fan of hip hop, but I really do like the Native American rapper Superman and I am a huge fan of his. And I loved one of his raps where he basically says, you know, why don't we lift our brother when we see them fall? Why do we act like God doesn't see it all? I mean, really, right? Our karma sees it all, you know, it's like, so we might think, well, you know, that little slight where I slighted somebody or that little selfish thing that I did, nobody's gonna notice. But the fact of the matter is our karma is going to notice and over time, our behavior will change because of what we do repeatedly. So we have to try our best to follow these. So if we look at the first of these, it's on page 30 at the bottom of the page. The first slogan is always train in the three basic principles. And, and I think what he's trying to get at here is the foundation. What's the foundation for a Lojong practitioner? Well, first of all, it's not having any fault, he says, in any of the the three ordinances. Now, Ken MacLeod chose the word ordination for this. I don't know Tibetan well enough to, to try to give that an alternative translation. But when he speaks of the three ordinances, he means the three levels of commitment that a person can take in Dharma. There are the, the commitments of individual liberation, which consists of taking the refuge vow and taking the, the five lay precepts, which are behavioral precepts, not killing, not stealing, not lying, not committing sexual misconduct and not taking intoxicants. So these five lay precepts and refuge are from the path of individual liberation where the person is seeking to bring an end to samsara for themselves alone. The second ordination is the Bodhisattva ordination, where you go before a master and take the Bodhisattva vow and vow that from now until enlightenment, we will work for the benefit of others and practice the six perfect virtues. That's the Mahayana ordination. And finally, the Vajrayana ordination is not an ordination per se, but it is the taking of Vajrayana empowerment. And when a person takes a Vajrayana empowerment, the master of a particular practice bestows upon the receiver of the empowerment, a blessing of body, speech and mind. The, 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 the master of the ceremony ritually cleanses and purifies the body, speech and mind of the person who is receiving the empowerment. And then the master teaches and gives authorization to the student to perform a specific visualization meditation on a Buddha or Bodhisattva like Tara or Chenrezig or Manjushri and so on. And by receiving the blessing of the body, speech and mind of that Buddha or Bodhisattva, they are initiated into the practice of that Buddha or Bodhisattva. And so what, what he is saying in this very first slogan is, you remember, remember all of those ceremonies you had. Remember your refuge, never forget it. Remember the precepts if you have taken them. Remember your Bodhisattva vow if you have taken that. Remember your Vajrayana ordination or empowerment that you have taken. Never go against those basic foundational promises. Those are your basic foundational promises in Dharma. Don't go against those. Start at the beginning with those foundations. And so that's what he's meaning by always train in the three basic principles. The first of which is not breaking any of the commitments you've made in any of your previous ceremonies. The second principle, it, the book says, he says, don't act scandalously. What he's saying here basically is that sometimes people will say, oh, I'm a Lojong practitioner. I don't have any ego fixation. I'm really special. See, I hang out with people at the lower end of the spectrum. You can respect me. And they're really, they're not truly trying to help people. They're actually just showing off. And they're trying to act in such a way that people will think they have no ego clinging. And it's all an act. So he's saying, if you're truly a Lojong practitioner, you won't act like this. The third principle that we are asked to train in is not to be one-sided. Meaning, don't tell people, oh, I'm a Lojong practitioner. I, you know, I believe in love and compassion. But then you go over on the other side of your life and you do something terrible. You act mean to some people and so forth and so on. In other words, you have to do your best to be fully and completely trained. And this includes being willing to change your behavior when you know you're wrong. When you are wrong, you promptly admit it. When you make a mistake, you apologize and so on. So that's, those are the three basic principles that we promise to uphold as Lojong practitioners. The second of these slogans is on page 31. And it says, change your intention, but behave naturally. And again, this is, this is, how, how does a Lojong practitioner behave? A Lojong practitioner, I've, I've had people tell me about this. They say, look, I'm really trying to practice love and compassion, but everybody I work with, when we go out to lunch, all they want to do is complain about the boss. What do we do? If I, if I don't join in the negative horrible gossip, there's some, they'll, they'll think I'm being like snooty and like I'm trying to say that I'm better than them. Well, this is kind of what this is referring to. In other words, he's asking us not to act sanctimonious around other people. Don't act like we're superior to other people. Don't make a big deal like, I'm a Lojong practitioner and as such, you know, I believe such and such or this and that. In other words, we have to try to be like other people. But do you notice what the book says? Act like you're, you know, your brothers and sisters in Dharma, not your brothers and sisters at work. Not your brothers and sisters, right? You know, so I'm just saying. And your next Zoom conference, be kind. Often what I will say is if somebody starts to complain about somebody else's behavior and they want to get a pile on, you know, or they just pile on somebody when they're not there. I like to try to say something like that's humorous to try to change the mood. I'll say, look, we didn't have to bring that person with us in this meeting. So let's leave them somewhere else, you know. Anyway, so that's, in other words, he's saying, don't act sanctimonious. Then there's like, there's like two things that he says. The next two things are like, he's basically saying, don't do the stuff you usually do when bad things happen. So the first one is, don't talk about other shortcomings. He's basically taking all the fun out of gossip. Taking all the fun out of it. Don't discuss unpleasant subjects like people's defects and things like this. Or their faults and spiritual matters like, oh, did you see that person? They have a vow and they broke their vow. And then I like it. Talk cheerfully about pleasant topics, topics in a gentle and friendly manner. I mean, it's not always possible, but at least, you know, don't go, don't go, don't go, what is it? Don't go gutter swimming, you know, just, you know, anyway. Then, then the second one is, don't dwell on others' problems. He has taken all the fun out of this. Not only is he taking the fun out of, of talking about people's shortcomings, he's telling you not to sit and think about them when they're not there. He says, don't think about other people's problems and seeing all kinds of faults in them. What's really funny, he uses a, a phrase in here that might not work for everyone. He says, seeing this fault in this other person is due to my impurity in my own outlook. As my friends like to say, if you spot it, you got it. You know, like if you look at somebody else and say, boy, that person's so selfish. Guess how we know? You know, we, if we can see negative behavior in another person, it's because we've got the same behavior somewhere within us. The, the previous Bo Kherimpoche, when he visited us in three-year retreat, he knew that not always did retreat brothers and sisters get along. And so he gave us a talk and one of the things he said was, look, don't sit and stew about things that people say and do to you. Just forget it. He said, he said, if somebody else's behavior bothers you, it's because you've got the same behavior and you just can't take it. So what I would advise people to do instead, I mean, we can't say, oh, that person is a perfect Buddha. But what we could do is we could say, look, I'm not perfect either. And so me making those, that person's faults bigger and bigger and bigger in my mind is not helping me. And it's definitely not helping them. So what I need to do is if there's something I can do about it, I'll do something about it. But if there's nothing I can do about it, I'm not going to sit here and let that person live rent-free in my head. Because, right? So the idea here is don't dwell on that because dwelling on the faults of other people only actually hurts us. We're spending time with negative thinking and believing like we're doing something positive. Then he, he continues to take all the fun out of, out of this stuff. Then he says, work on your strongest negative emotion first. And so what he's saying here is, he says, examine your personality to determine which disturbing emotions are strongest. Concentrate all your Dharma practice on them in the beginning. Khenpo Karthar Rinpoche in his book, Dharma Paths, I can't always quote the, the page number instantly. But in Dharma Paths, Khenpo Karthar Rinpoche says, we should all make a list of our top, he didn't say top 10, but you know, of our top faults. And he said, part of the reason for this is so we will know and confront them. We will know what we're up against and we will begin to confront them. But the second reason is so that when other people point them out to us, we won't say, oh, me? No. Instead we'll say, oh, that's number 12. So in this way, in this way, by looking at and working on our greatest faults first, then it'll get easier to work on the smaller ones. Now, if you remember my conversation a couple of classes ago about literary comments and literary styles of Lojong practitioners, you will recognize this next one. Give up any hope for results. So as you know, Lojong writers will sometimes use exaggeration and irony to bring your attention to something. So he's using a clever exaggeration here. So he's using a clever exaggeration here. He's saying, give up all hope of results, like that's a terrible thing, right? Like, uh, give up hope, all ye who enter here, I mean, right? But that's not what he means. He's, there's actually a, a little bit of a code in this. He's saying, give up any hope for results that will benefit your self-clinging. Give up the hope that when you are a, a Lojong practitioner, people will think you're great. You give up that thought that you'll be seen as being wonderful and great. Give up that kind of hope. It's not give up hope that you're ever going to improve as a Bodhisattva in training. So again, he's using exaggeration and irony here as a way of saying, remember this and keep this in mind. Then he says, give up poisoned food. And, and again, he's using a, a bit of exaggeration because nobody would eat poisoned food. That's ridiculous. That's an exaggeration. So like, why would we, why would it be hard to give up poisoned food? But then inside he explains the irony. He said, if we do beneficial things with the inner motivation of wanting some kind of benefit for ourselves, that's like eating poisoned food. So he said, we have to always be watching. Remember those two things I said, you know, at the beginning of this talk, what are the two things that allow us to, uh, to really change ourselves? One is noticing our stuff and making a change in our stuff. So, you know, so noticing it and then being willing to make a change. And so that's what he's asking us to do here. Be willing to give up that poisoned food. The next one, he says, don't rely on a sense of duty. Again, usually duty is a good thing. So again, he's using irony and exaggeration to draw your attention to something with a little bit of a twist. He said, a person who's like really into duty would feel duty-bound to continue to hate someone who has harmed them. They, they, they feel like a duty. Oh yeah, that person harmed me a long time ago, but it would be wrong for me to give that, that hatred up. That's the kind of duty he wants you to let go of. The duty to holding a grudge. So he wants you to stop holding grudges because grudges are only hurting us. Again, from the 12-step tradition, my dad taught me one of the great, uh, the great sayings, which was, uh, holding a grudge is like drinking poison and expecting the other person to die. Because the, the, yeah, because the hatred that we, that we ingest when we hold that grudge, that hatred, okay, is actually harmful to us more than it's harmful to the other person. So, uh, so those are, I mean, I know that's a little bit like not nice, but I mean, there's another one. Uh, let's see, uh, yeah, no, I won't do that one. That's what, that one's even like, that's even more graphic. Never mind. Um, so then the next of these slogans is, don't lash out. In other words, he says, in general, don't take joy in provoking others. So I'm really sorry, but this is going to take a lot of the fun out of political debate. But still, there's, there's greater things in life. Don't take joy in provoking other people. And particularly when someone has done something bad to you, don't speak about them maliciously to others. Again, with the 12-step, in the 12-step, they, they call that gathering your army, which means you go around to all of your friends and say, oh, this person did a terrible thing to me. You should really hate them. You know what I mean? It's like, it's like, it's like middle school all over again. It's, it's really, it's, it doesn't seem to work. He said, in fact, even if some injury has resulted, strive always to praise the good qualities of others without blaming this or that person. And what they're getting at here is they're not saying that there should be no justice. If you've got a problem that needs to be resolved, an injustice that needs to be resolved, and you can do something about it, well, then you must. But what he's telling you is don't live with that grudge. Don't live with that hatred. Don't ingest that hatred over and over again. Um, then, let's see here. Don't wait in ambush. Another way of talking about grudges. Because sometimes when you have a grudge and it's a real good one, you'll figure out how to get even. And then no matter how much time has passed, you'll be able to wait for that person and jump out and, and harm them. So he says, um, don't, and then interestingly enough, he says, at the end of the paragraph, which is on the top of page thirty-four, he says, for the kind of trouble caused by demons. I, I know this is not something that happens in everybody's everyday life. I mean, we haven't really talked about having any demon problems lately. But he's, what he's saying, you, you could actually, instead of use the word demon, you could actually talk about any kind of chronic, deep problem. For any kind of, don't cling to the problem, but work only on love and compassion. Uh, Khenpo Kherimpeche said on more than one occasion that love is the only way to, uh, to overcome hatred. And so he said, we have to just keep working at it, even though our love is imperfect and we can't quite do it. At least, uh, at least abstain from harming people, actively harming them, if you can. And so, um, when we cling to a problem, it gets bigger in our minds. That's like a human tendency. The more you think, I have a problem, I have a problem, I have a problem. It gets bigger in your mind and gets more and more difficult to, to solve. And again, a 12-step slogan that my dad taught me was, don't live in the problem, live in the answer. So in other words, instead of dwelling on the problem and how supposedly insurmountable it is, think of small ways to, uh, to address the problem. So that's, um, that's what's going on there. Uh, the next one, uh, don't go for the throat, meaning you know how to hurt people. Especially if you're close to them, you know, just the right thing that's going to hurt them. Don't do that. We know you love to, but don't do that. That's what he's saying in that slogan. Don't put the ox's load on the cow, means don't give somebody else your problem to solve. If, you know, you know, it's the old Tom Sawyer thing, right? And Tom Sawyer's painting the, the fence and then his buddy comes along and he says, here, help me paint the fence. And then he leaves and he leaves the guy to finish painting the fence. So don't, don't do that. See, what he's doing here is that Chikawa Yoshidori is like looking into our minds and seeing all the sneaky little things that we do when we think nobody's looking. Where we can, where our, our self fixation tries to get away with stuff. And he's basically saying, don't, don't, don't be this kind of person. Then he even says, don't be competitive. And I love the way he really, he really gets into this. He says, you know, even among Dharma people, people want to be in front, you know, and get the attention and oops, all that kind of stuff. And so you have to watch out for people like that. So that you don't become one of those people. So I like it. He's, he's just really great. He's basically says, we know you'll work, work on all these little schemes. He says, give other, give those up. Then he says, don't make practice a sham. Uh, this is a little bit difficult to understand, but what he's getting at is saying, don't, don't pretend to be a mind-training practitioner while secretly holding a different agenda. He says, I know you're doing it, so don't. So he's like, if you accept a setback for the time being out of a desire for future benefits for yourself, or if you practice mind-training expecting to cure illness or, uh, mental disturbances and ward off adverse, uh, situations, your practice is wrong. Like hypocritical charlatans. In other words, if you want to get a reputation for being able to subdue demons, which you know, it's, it's not exactly a job description in modern America, but you know, the, if you want to like have people think that you're special, it, this is not the way to go about it. He says, whatever happiness or sorrow comes, meditate without arrogance. And so then, uh, let's see, we do have, how much time do I have? Okay, we have a little time. Um, I just want to point out that on page thirty-five, Jamgon Kontrul the Great makes a, a digression. In other words, he goes off on a nineteenth-century rant. And, uh, and so I, but I want to point it out to you because it's like really cool if you know history. His rant actually makes more sense if you have read his life story. So Jamgon Kontrul was born in the eighteen hundreds. And he was born into, um, a, a family of, um, of practitioners. And he was, um, he became a, a Buddhist monk at a young age, but he was really, he was a genius. He was very special. And, uh, so he was given monastic ordination and all of this sort of thing in one of the four traditions of Buddhism. But then he, because of circumstances, he had to go to another monastery and they said, oh no, that, that ordination's no good. You have to take it again. And then, uh, he thought that was kind of, uh, wrong-headed. And then, uh, he began to have visions of Buddhas and Bodhisattvas. And they, it is, these visions inspired him to write prayers and sadhanas to those Buddhas and Bodhisattvas. In other words, he was, he had received a treasure teaching. And the treasure teachings, um, were considered to have been authored by Guru Rinpoche, who was, uh, the, the Tibetans call him a second Buddha. And so because Guru Rinpoche, who lived in the, uh, eighth century, because he was so special and so forth, it was, he was said to have written many, many teachings and then hidden them away in rocks, uh, in, in lakes, in trees, and that they would be discovered by people in the future. He wrote predictions that they would be found by specific people. These treasures would be found by specific people in the future. And some of them would be mined treasures where the, the person would have visions and then write these. And they were all considered genuine Dharma because they were not in conflict with any of the Buddha's teachings. But there, but a group of, uh, of Buddhist monastics took it into their mind that they were, that these treasure teachings were wrong and evil. So they told Jamgon Kontrul, you need to burn those. They're, they're evil. And Jamgon Kontrul said, you're telling me to burn these? And they're saying, yes, because they're evil. And he said, okay. So he burns them and then he gets really sick. And, uh, and so he realized too late that he had actually gone against his, um, the, the, um, his own, uh, treasures. And then another treasure revealer came along and, uh, actually said, I know what your problem is. You've, uh, you've gone against your, your heritage, so to speak. I have a treasure of my own and if you practice this, you'll get well. And so Jamgon Kontrul practiced it. He got well. And then he got, then he got his own perspective on the whole thing and started speaking out and saying that this, you know, burning of books is wrong. So knowing this is his history, uh, now enjoy his nineteenth-century rant. Um, this is on page thirty-five, beginning with the words with the, this example. Consider the topic of mistaken Dharma practice. Mistaken outlooks are outlooks based on eternalism or nihilism. You know, that everything exists or nothing exists. Mistaken meditation is meditation that clings to some sublime state. Mistaken conduct is conduct that is not consistent with the three Buddhist ordinances. Mistaken Dharma denotes anything that is contradictory to the ethics or outlook authoritatively taught in the holy Dharma, regardless of who it comes from, you or someone else, the very best or the very least. It will propel you into samsara and the lower realms. It's like taking the wrong medicine for illness and/or applying the wrong disciplinary measures. Now here we come to it. There are individuals who call certain composed and revealed works mistaken Dharma without examining the words or thoughts in a single chapter to see whether they are pure or mistaken. It would appear they issue their pronouncements out of attachment to their own systems or from personal differences. It is said that no one but a Buddha is able to evaluate the worth of an individual. So even though you may not like a person who has arrived at a proper outlook and ethics, your dislike doesn't make the Dharma mistaken. For example, a merchant could sell gold or glitter, but it doesn't make him a better or worse merchant. The Buddha said over and over again, don't rely on individuals, rely on the Dharma. And now, uh, and now here's me complaining about the typesetter. Uh, the, the words, I make this digression are actually Jamgon Kontrul's words. The, the, any, any of my friends who are editors will, will recognize what's happened here. They accidentally ran the quote together with the narrative. It's not that way in the original. I'm just saying. And so Jamgon Kontrul finishes his rant by saying, I made this digression here because it is so important to understand this point. So anyhow, I just had to share the rant. Even nineteenth-century enlightened beings have, you know, they have, they have thoughts. Then there are two more of the sixteen slogans. The first of these is, don't turn a god into a demon. Again, once again, if as you meditate on mind-training, your personality becomes stiff with pride and arrogance, it's as though you have turned a god into a demon. Dharma has become non-Dharma. The more you meditate on mind-training and Dharma, the more supple your mind and personality should become. Act as the lowest servant to everyone. And those of you who met great Dharma masters will know that that is exactly how they act. I will never forget how, um, how kind and solicitous the seventeenth karmapa was in the presence of Khenpo Kherimpeche. I remember when they were in a meeting together, uh, his holiness made sure he had a soft cushion, that, that Khenpo Rinpoche had a soft cushion and that he had his cup of tea right where he could grab it. And he got him biscuits and, and he just was very solicitous. And he was as though, yeah, he was the, the lowest servant to Khenpo Rinpoche. It was just like really wow, right? And then the, the final, uh, one of these slogans is, uh, don't look to profit from sorrow. So if you're a Lojong practitioner, don't act like this. Don't think, oh, if something happens to my fellow practitioners, I will get their books. Or, or if, uh, I'm among a group of people and, uh, you know, and then I'm, I'm left alone and all of them die, I'm going to get everything. I mean, you know, it's just like, don't do this. And then, and then of course, then finally, wouldn't it be wonderful? He said, don't think like this. Wouldn't it be wonderful if all my enemies were to die? Uh, in, in a word, he says, you must refrain from, uh, hoping for suffering to come to others as a way of extending your own comfort and happiness. So, uh, in this way, he has given us sixteen slogans that remind us uh, to watch our minds, to watch our minds, see all of our little schemes and take action, uh, to correct anything that's, uh, not happening properly in our personality. So, uh, so that's a, a little bit about the, um, um, the, um, point six. Now, uh, I'm going to stay on for about five more minutes, but I do need to let you know that I have to stop a little bit early tonight because at our home monastery at Karma Triana Dharma Chakra, uh, they are, uh, doing the ten-day teaching. And, um, uh, Khenpo Urgen Tenzin is teaching on the life story of, uh, the great seventeenth-century master, Karma Chagmay. And so, uh, at the top of the hour, I will, I will need to be in my place to receive those teachings from Khenpo Urgen. But I have a little bit of time left if people have questions on point six. Uh, and what I can tell you is that, uh, if reading about point six, you get a little discouraged about yourself, uh, uh, you're not alone. We kind of all feel this way when we read point six because we recognize our faults and failings in what he's talking about. But this is not meant to make us feel badly about ourselves. It's, it's meant to, uh, for us, it's meant for us to feel encouraged and to know that we can change and we don't have to do what we used to do. And even if we make just the smallest change, just one small change, if we practice, um, if we practice the three objects, three poisons, three seeds of virtue slogan, if we practice this slogan, um, we will, uh, be, uh, be able to gradually change anything that happens. And now I'm remembering a question that came to me um, uh, from, from one of the participants in class. And I answered it partly, but I didn't answer it all the way. So I have forgotten the name of the questioner. But they were talking about, um, thinking about the faults of others and holding a bit of a grudge. And that, that grudge led them to knee-jerk reactions whenever they think about. whenever they think about the person or come in the contact with the person who's caused them harm. And they wondered what practice would be good to do for this. And it really does come down to these two things. Watching your mind and being willing to take action to correct the way, your way of thinking. The three objects, three poisons, three seeds of virtue slogan goes like this. When we have a feeling, whether it's coming from an old grudge, if it's an old grudge, that's a feeling of aversion. That's one of the three poisons, aversion. The other, the other two poisons are attachment and ignorance. And so these three basic mental afflictions cause us all the trouble that we have in samsara. It's all coming from these three things. But if we are willing, if we're willing to admit that we're feeling something and make the commitment to work with it right there, right on the time when we feel it, we can actually begin to make a change in our tendency to react. Because the person was saying, "Well, how can we stop the momentum of reaction?" And the answer is, at first, you can't stop the momentum of a reaction because it's too strong. Because we've spent like days, weeks, months, maybe years, holding a grudge. And we've spent days, weeks, months, and years acting on every impulse, like saying something wicked to somebody just because it makes us feel good. And so we have all these bad habits. And so at first, most of these negative mental afflictions are going to get away from us. We won't be able to catch them. But if we continue to be committed to practicing Lojong and be committed to confront our own aversion, our own attachment, and our own bewilderment or ignorance, if we're willing to address it right there, right at that time, even if we can't completely overcome it, we will have reduced the momentum of negativity. We'll have reduced the momentum. We'll have taken back some of that power for ourselves. That negative mental affliction holds a lot of power because we have a mistaken notion. This is something that Trungpa Rinpoche said. He said, "We make a mistake about anger. We think it makes us smart. We think it makes us a force for justice. We think that it makes us righteous." He said, "When really, all it does is make us make mistakes and make us stupid and gets us into more trouble." And so if we can, if we can start thinking in that way and say every day, because Rinpoche said, "When you have a problem with a particular person, wake up in the morning and say to yourself, 'Today, I am not going to let that person get under my skin. I'm going to pray that that person have happiness and goodness, and I'm going to pray that I have the strength to confront my own arrogance and to confront my own negativity.'" And so it will, in a very, very small way, make a change. We have to be satisfied with small changes over a period of time. So anyhow, sorry, I did take up the question period with that. But I wanted to make sure I explained it. And questioner, if you still haven't got the answer to your question, you can either ask now or send me another email. I've had an incredibly busy week. We're trying to get started on the construction for the Columbus KTC and I'm like overwhelmed with lots of tasks. So sometimes I will forget. So if you ever write to me and I don't write back to you in three days, please write again. I will not be offended. Is there any other question to address? Okay, I'm looking at chat and I'm not seeing it. So because of the shortness of time, we'll stop here. And in the Lojong practice, I think there's a dedication at the end. Oh yeah, it's the Seven Branch Prayer, of course. So, yeah, so... I thank you for putting up with the fact that this was, that this week and next week, there's going to be yak 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 yak. It's going to be a lot of talking because I've got, I forget how many slogans are in point seven, but I got to race through them. So anyway. "Thinking that we gather together all of the merit and goodness from this session, we dedicate the merit to all suffering beings, particularly those who are really struggling right now with negative mental afflictions of all kinds, making the aspiration that they're freed from those." And I'm going to read the Seven Branch Prayer. "With complete faith, I bow to all the victorious ones and their children who abide in the ten directions and three times. I offer flowers, incense, light, perfume, food, music, and many other things, both in substance and with my imagination. I ask the noble assemblage to accept them. I confess all evil actions that I have done influenced by the defilements from time without beginning until now, the five that ripen immediately, the ten non-virtuous acts, and many others. I rejoice in the merit of whatever virtue Shravakas, Pratyekabuddhas, Bodhisattvas, and ordinary people gather throughout the three times. I pray for the Wheel of Dharma to be turned, the teachings of the Mahayana and the Hinayana in ways suitable for the different aptitudes and motivations present in sentient beings. I ask the Buddhas not to pass into Nirvana, but with great compassion and until samsara is completely empty, to look after all sentient beings who drown in this ocean of sorrow. May whatever merit I have accumulated become a seed for the enlightenment of all beings. Without delay, may I become a splendid leader for all beings." Okay, so thank you, everybody. I just, you know, I can't thank you enough for being patient and hanging in here. I will do my best to download the video and upload it to YouTube tonight so that it will be available on that link. And thank you again for putting that link on. So you can unmute and say bye-bye. So...
Thank you, Lama Kathy.
Thank you, Lama Kathy. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Lama Kathy.
Okay, yeah, take really good care. And once again, Chuck, take good care of all of you. Tashi delek.
Thank you.
See you over on the KTD meeting. Okay, Amane Pame Hong.